Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. We've got a work session this evening and we've got one presentation item. And it involves promoting economic development. And it's going to be an economic development overview. Cheryl, you're listed as the staff contact, but are you just going to introduce our guest?
I'm going to introduce this wonderful team of experts we have and give you an opportunity to hear from Cootac Rock and Ellers. Both of them spend extensive amount of their time working on economic development incentives throughout the Johnson County as well as the metro area. So tonight, they're going to talk about kind of a framework for considering economic development projects and the kinds of things that we will evaluate as we move forward with our economic development initiative.
Okay, very good.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Joe Serrano with Cootac Rock. My colleagues, Dottie Riley is here, and Bruce Kemel with Ellers is here. We'll have this presentation this evening. Relatively brief presentation. Bruce will talk about kind of the reset of the economic development tools that we see. Then Bruce and Dottie will talk about kind of the state of the art in the development and some common considerations for development agreements. Then we'll provide some case studies for you, some developments in which we've worked and some that have been going on for quite some time. Please, at any time, if you have any questions, stop us or if you want to wait until after the presentation, feel free to. We'll ask questions then. Let's see. This first slide or the second slide is common economic development incentives. Again, this is kind of a very brief overview and it stopped me if you have any particular questions. What we see right now generally are TIFs, tax increment financing, community improvement districts, and industrial revenue bonds. Those are typical common economic incentives tools that we're seeing right now. There are others, of course. For instance, there's transportation development districts and other excise tax utilization, waivers of excise tax alike. One of the things really important is it's kind of a, it's been an evolving area. That is, it used to be where a developer would come in and ask, hey, we want a TIF. Can you help us with establishing a TIF? It's now been evolving into a situation where a developer will come in and ask, hey, we want a full, we want a full package. That would include a TIF, a CID, and industrial revenue bonds for sales tax exemption. So it's, it's an evolving process and we've seen this in Johnson County quite a bit, what this particular kind of structure may be. The first big incentive is the TIF. Again, I'm going to hit the highlights. I'm not going to read through here. This is for land acquisition side improvements and public infrastructure. The main thing for the source of revenues is when they, when you create the TIF district, it sets a base and that incremental value from the debt, from the, from the base is used to pay for development costs. And a TIF can run up to 20 years. The TIF is the longer of the processes that we'll see. Usually, it takes between six months, nine months. A lot of times, it takes a lot longer than that. But it's a multi-step process whereby you have really two steps. One is the creation of the, of the district and then, and then there's a separate set of proceedings that is for the creation, for the approval of the plan, for the project plan. On this one, this is where the county has, and the school district have the right to, has, have the right to veto the creation, at the creation of the district. The next, the next tool that we see is community improvement districts. This is involved where a landowner petitions the city for the creation of the district. The revenues can be used for a wide, a wide variety of eligible costs. The revenue source, this is where the revenue source is either up to a 2% add-on sales tax or a special assessment. The sales tax can run for 22 years and special assessment for, for 20 years. Or you can have them both. You can have them combined, both the sales tax and a special assessment. And then the final tool that we'll talk about is just industrial revenue bonds. This is where you get, where they'll issue bonds for, for property tax abatement. That's for up to 10 years for property tax abatement. You can have in a, for instance, in a TIF district, you will not get an abatement, but you'll be, the property could qualify for, or the, the bonds could be issued for a sales tax exemption within that TIF district. For the CIDs, for, like I said, the TIFs usually range, you know, it could be six months to nine months. CIDs usually process is about two to three months. Industrial revenue bonds, we always say it's, it's going to take about 60 to 90 days to get bonds issued. I want to turn it over to Dottie and to Bruce to talk about the state of the art, the art of the deal and the development agreements. May I answer any questions, ma'am?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Bruce Kemel with Ellers. It's nice to be back with you. I'm going to go over a few of the points that we discussed at your economic development, development forum back, I guess it was last March of 2015. Time really flies. But I thought some of these points, this is a scaled down version of what we discussed back then, but I thought some of these points were really germane to tonight's discussion and hopefully they'll, they'll help you form a productive framework as you think about various economic development projects that are being proposed here in the city. So when we work with cities as municipal advisors, helping them get their arms around whether and how they want to participate in a private development project, we often encounter both staff and governing bodies that can be on the verge of being paralyzed a little bit with all the different things to consider. And really, there are many, many factors on both the private side of the development as well as the public side of the development that are all sort of intertwined with each other. Some of them are the development plan itself and the cost estimates for that project in, determining whether you have a good handle on those, on those plans and cost estimates. Another big one, and this is especially true of a city like Gardner, would be public infrastructure requirements. You know, what kind of road, infrastructure, water, sewer, stormwater, electric. You really have the gamut of utilities and infrastructure that are required for greenfield development in particular on the periphery of the city. And as you know, that can be a massive cost and you need to make sure you have a good handle on what needs to get done and how much it's going to cost and when that needs to get done in order to support development. Impact on public services. This doesn't come up too much, but sometimes when you have a big project like a Speedway or even an IKEA, there can be public works or public safety considerations and we want to make sure that we're factoring in what's the likely impact on the city's operating budget in that regard. The developers' financial and practical capacity. This is something we try to dig into often on the city's behalf, really looking at their financial wherewithal, their past experience. Have they done similar projects in other places? How has that gone for other communities? And remember, we can also sign confidentiality agreements to look at some sensitive information sometimes on a city's behalf without all of that information having to go into the public records. So that can be useful as well. And then what are truly the, all the options for directing revenues from a development towards both private and public costs? You know, there's a whole suite of costs that you might be incurring. There's a whole suite of costs that the developers incurring. We want to make sure we understand what all those combinations might be. But as you can tell, at the outset, all of these things might seem a little bit overwhelming if you try to consider them all at once. And to make matters worse, and I'll put worse in air quotes because it's not meant to be pejorative, it's just sort of the way of the world. Developers will often come to a community saying, well, we want this amount of TIF, we want this amount of CID, we want an industrial revenue bond, we want some other kind of public participation, we want the city to issue bonds to build something. And they'll say, so here's our proposal and it's all ready for you. And if you aren't ready to respond to that in a, in a proactive way and really break it apart into manageable pieces, it's very often the case that you will feel pressure either to say no because it's too much and it's too much of an unknown risk and obligation. And you might be feeling you might, are missing an opportunity or just as bad in some ways is a pressure to say yes because you're afraid of losing the deal. And then you have a lingering nagging feeling that you might have given away too much public participation or too much incentive, more than what was necessary to get the deal done. So what we'd like to suggest is a more holistic framework to get from a sort of a macro level down to a micro level so that by the end of the day, by the end of the negotiation, you feel confident that you and your team have negotiated the best possible deal that helps get the deal done, but not at too great of a cost or too great of a risk for the city. And so you might remember some of these questions and these aren't the only questions. These are just sort of illustrative of the sort of, again, micro, or macro to micro progression that you might take. First of all, is economic development a priority? Of course, and you've identified it as a large priority and appropriately so for the city of Gardner. At the same time though, I know very well that fiscal stewardship is also a key priority for the city. And so how do you balance those? And, and we're all very aware of that dual balance in the city's top priorities. What kinds of development are higher priorities? You know, you've got proposals that are starting dependent on industrial, some retail as well. Are there specific things that you want to see happen? Are there specific areas of the city where you think this really makes sense to put in public investment and to make things happen in a certain area of the city, whether that's downtown or somewhere on the periphery? And then what benefits and costs, both quantitative as well as qualitative, qualitative, you know, being more of the quality of life issues, would that project bring to the city? And if there are benefits, are they at risk? And if there are risks, or excuse me, are there costs, can we mitigate them somehow or at least limit them so that they're not an unknown future liability? Again, developer capacity. This is something that often gets overlooked, but you're entering into a business partnership with a developer and so you need to be very confident that these are the right people to deliver the project and that they've got the capacity and the experience and the horsepower to get it done in a reasonable amount of time. So given these sort of foundational questions, then the next big question is, are you willing to consider financial participation in some way, shape, or form? Not necessarily taking what the developer has put in front of you, but saying, okay, we're interested, this is enough of a priority, let's take the next step and really dig into what might be necessary to make this deal happen. So with that then, if you say yes to that question, then we really get into the gap, the analysis of the so-called but-for test. And you may have remembered this term. It's sort of an antique term, but the idea is, you know, but for city participation, whether it's in building infrastructure or providing an incentive or a combination incentives, would this deal happen or something substantially similar to this project? It's not a question of would anything happen? Because in a lot of places, especially in a, in a good community like Gardner, something might happen, but would this really high value, highest and best use, so to speak, happen without some level of public participation? And what is that gap and why does it exist? Are there extraordinary infrastructure costs to serve an area? Is there blight or environmental remediation that needs to happen? Things that are, what are the things that are above and beyond normal development, so to speak, that are causing the developer's budget to be too high to really have a reasonable expectation of profitability? And that's what you're wanting to gauge is what, what's the right number to get them to, a chance to achieve a successful project? Not to guarantee a successful project, but to give them that level playing field or that reasonable opportunity to have success and a, and a reasonable return on investment.
Bruce?
Yeah?
A quick question. Can you, can you maybe give us a little bit more information about what you as our financial advisors would look for as far as financial capacity to complete and then be committed to development partner? You know, when the Great Recession hit, we ended up a little upside down in a couple of our, more than a couple of our benefit districts.
Right.
So can you tell us how, how you would be able to identify people that would not only be good in the short term, but good if things get critical?
Right. That's a great question, Mr. Mayor. A few things we'd look at are financial wherewithal, so looking at tax returns and financial statements. Things are that, obviously, these are snapshots. They only tell a picture at a certain point in time. But it's important to see what kind of resources are available right now and then what kind of business relationships do these folks have that have access to additional capital, whether that's equity or debt financing? And then speaking of debt financing, we want to really dig into what are the debt plans for the project and how secure and real are those? You know, sometimes a developer says, well, we have all our financing lined up. We've got our equity, we've got our bank. When you really dig into who are those equity partners and who's the bank, it's all still very conceptual. So before you get too far down the road with making your own investment, we would want to make sure on both the equity and the debt side that these are real commitments and real capacity to move forward. But then, as it relates to things like benefit districts or perhaps other ways that the city might be involved, we would also want to take a hard look at how do we mitigate the city's risk? And that's where guarantees can come into play or sureties. There's different ways of protecting and hedging the city's risk in that regard. But we would want to look at the nature of what you're being asked to do, what you think is reasonable for the city to do. And then based on that proposed idea of participation, we would think of additional ways that the developer might need to protect the city and make sure that your exposure isn't too high. Another thing that I think might pertain, especially with multi-phase development, and I think Dottie and Joe will speak more about this as well, is how do you sometimes, how might you structure the, the city's participation to make sure that you get all the way through the project or at least make that as likely as possible, right? So there's things we can do with deferring certain incentives or having so-called clawback provisions that if they don't perform, there's a way to recoup some of the city's investment. Now, I'll tell you, and I think my lawyer friends will agree, there's no way of eliminating city risk. You know, things happen, just like you saw with some of your benefit districts. I think if we look upfront at what is their track record, what is their capacity, what are their actual financing plans and are they real financing plans? And then look at how do we mitigate the city's risk in a proactive way? We can help head off some of those situations.
Very good.
Okay, let's move on then. So once we've gotten to the gap, there we go. That's when I really like to get into the question of which incentive and what public tools make sense. You know, the, the impulse sometimes is to jump right to TIF or right to CID or right to a city GO bond. And while we can always have that sort of on a parallel track, I think unless you answer some of these really fundamental questions of, you know, is this a good project? Is it a priority? Does, is the developer have the likes to get it done? And is there a gap? Is there truly a demonstrable need for his public participation in order to get it done? It's really premature to say, well, this absolutely needs TIF or some other public tool. So we'd like to define the universal of the tools and how they can be applied to specific costs. You know, if you're looking at street infrastructure, maybe a benefit district is appropriate there. If you're looking at water and sewer, maybe some use of, of excise taxes is appropriate there, right? There's, there's different ways we can apply different revenue sources to parts of the puzzle. And then finally, this is where we get to, what is the win-win? We want to come up with a workable solution that allows that project to move forward, gives the benefit for the city, both the quantitative and the qualitative benefits, and really gives that developer again, that confidence to proceed without too much undue profit or too much of a guarantee of a, of a return on investment. You want to still keep the impetus and the risk squarely on their shoulders because that's what they get paid for. And, you know, that's not a bad thing. You want developers to put their money at risk and to have that incentive to perform. But you also don't want to put too much of the city's capital at risk. And, you know, we've talked a number of times about capacity, the city's capacity to do things. The city is in good financial shape and you're only getting better as more of your debt is being retired. So you have capacity to do things, but you have a lot on your plate, I know, of both public infrastructure and development. And we want to make sure that if you're going to be deploying some of that capacity, you're doing so for the right reasons and to build even more capacity, right? To even, to grow that pie even further. And then finally, I went over some of these items, I think, at the forum last spring as well. But these are some of the specific types of analysis that we get involved with and I won't go into too much detail here. But, you know, we, we can do that developer background research and, and look into their reputation as well. Are they a good partner to the public sector in getting complicated projects done? Financial capacity I covered. Project feasibility, looking at the budgets, the operating performance. Land assumptions will be key. Ryan, your city attorney, has raised a really good point in some of our conversations in the past about, well, if you put in infrastructure someplace, how does that raise or change the land prices? And how should we be factoring that in over time, right? Because you're not just looking at it here in 2016, you're looking at a situation that will evolve over time. And that's true of a lot of different types of development. So that's a great example of, of having a nimble, nuanced approach to analysis that we try to do without getting too complicated because you can obviously drown yourself in details, but we want to make sure that we're hitting the right level of detail. Yes?
Bruce, you just brought up something that we've kind of discussed in the past and that is about our annexation strategy. And obviously, with a lot of the development happening on the other side of I-35, which is inland, that's not part of the city of Gardner as it currently is right now, we're going to probably need to look at that in pretty much in tandem when development is occurring. We're going to need to, to annex that, that in. Given what we know our infrastructure needs and our street needs now for that area, would it make sense for us to pursue annexation well before we start planning that infrastructure so that when the land prices go up, they are somewhat protected? Or are somewhat protected?
Yeah, councilmember shoot and councilmembers. I guess I'm not familiar enough with the specific details of that area. That can be an appropriate strategy. I think you're, I think you're touching though on one of the key points that does relate to that area across the freeway and that is the infrastructure. And I think we're still getting our arms around some of those costs and how those will likely impact land values. So I think you're asking a really good question. I just, I don't know enough at this juncture to give you an opinion on that.
Good.
But that's absolutely something that, again, there's lots of parallel tracks, right? And I think you've identified an important one. The last thing I wanted to raise for you is this idea of the city's internal rate of return. And before I turn it back over to Dottie and Joe, this is something that we've tried to incorporate and I think done a nice job of in saying, okay, the developer has a rate of return on investment and that's very important to pay attention to as you're thinking about whether and how to participate. But again, what is the city getting out of this? You know, if you are going to be doing a tax abatement or doing a TIF and putting some of these public resources into the project, that may be very, very justifiable. But what are you getting over the long term for that investment and how does that grow the city's capacity as a whole? Or what qualitative things about services, retail, or other job creators that really make the city a better place to live, work, and play, are you getting out of this as well? So it might not just be numbers, even though that's what I do, but we want to make sure that we, we're keeping a good sense of where you're trying to get to in terms of the city's return on investment as well as making this work for the developer. Are there any questions about that overview? I know we're going to jump more into development agreements and some case studies after this, but anything based on what I've discussed? Okay, thank you.
Hi, Bruce.
Good evening, Dottie Riley, the shortest of the speakers this evening. I'm going to talk about development agreements. Typically, when there are TIFs or CIDs involved, there will be an agreement, a contractual agreement entered into between the city and the developer or the applicant. A development agreement is not required under state law, but it's a practical matter. Both you as the city and the developer on their side need to have it in order for there to be some clarity as to what you're planning on doing and what you expect from, expect from them and what they're obligated to do. When I started working on TIFs many years ago, I, I don't know if I should tell you this, but I actually did a very good TIF that was ever done in Kansas many, many years ago. Development agreements were really simple things and they tended to, and they tended to be written in terms of we as the city agree to give you this, rather than we're going to give you this and in exchange for that, you're agreeing to do this, which we want to have happen in our community. Development agreements have changed dramatically over the last decade or so and, and we continue to discover things that we want to add to them in order to address things that, that you will need to deal with during the term of a TIF or, or a CID incentive. And TIFs, as Joe indicated earlier, are going to run for up to 20 years. CIDs can run for up to 22 years. And I will tell you, it can be very challenging to think of everything that could happen within that, you know, two decades or more that, that you may want to have addressed in the agreement. But the agreement becomes the document you will go to every time there's something that you hadn't expected. Let's see if I can figure out how to do this. Ah, there we go. Some of the key provisions in development agreements, just want to go through them because all of these things are negotiable items that we usually spend a lot of time with. And I will tell you, in the whole process, the aspects of it that require the most time are doing the financial analysis that Bruce described and then coming to terms in a development agreement with what you want to see and what they're willing to agree to do. Even though there are a lot of statutory procedures, they're actually pretty simple in comparison to these, the other, these other concepts that are embedded in the provision of incentives. So the probably single most important aspect of a development agreement is whether or not you as the city plan to establish certain mandatory milestones. And by that I mean you indicating in a contract, developer, you need to produce this much of what you said within this time period. And if you don't do that, then we, as the city, have the right to terminate the agreement. Typically, those types of provisions will include a force measure. So if there's horrible weather, if there's, you know, they can't get the supplies, if there's something too beyond their control, so they can't proceed with construction, there would be an understanding that would be built into the agreement that there would be an extension given. But absent that, typically, we see in development agreements, very specific milestones. The type of milestones vary with the city. Sometimes it's you will build all of it by a certain time. Sometimes it will, you will start construction by a certain time and finish by another. You'll have so many square feet done by this time, so many additional square feet by another. Depends on the project and what, what you want to see happen. Development agreements typically are going to specifically address the items that you are willing to pay for out of the incentive. That also varies a lot based on the, the community. There are certain statutory limits as to how you can use incentives, TIF money or CID money. But particularly in the case of CIDs, it's very, very broad. And so some cities impose other requirements. So some cities, some cities require incentive money to be used for public improvements. Some, some cities require, are permitted to use for public or private improvements, but they limit the types of private improvements. So for example, they may say, we're not going to pay for soft costs. We want to see our money go for hard costs, something that will be permanent to the community. Many cities limit the availability of TIF or CID revenue to pay for the developer's attorney fees because you're really kind of paying for someone to negotiate against you. So some cities have limits on how much interest cost they're willing to reimburse for. So these are all factors to be considered when you're determining what you will reimburse Limitations on the amount of or circumstances under which you'll provide any incentive money. So for example, again, depending on the facts, you may say you have to have acquired all the property in the district before we'll agree to provide you any incentive money. Sometimes it's, you have to have started construction before we'll provide you any incentive money. Sometimes it's you have to be open for business or have a building open for business before you'll do it. So all of these things go to how far, how much you want to see before you start handing over revenue. Typically, the development agreements include provisions relating to the rights of the developer to assign their rights to the development agreement to another party. of the developer to assign their rights to the development agreement to another party. Sometimes developments are entered into from the very beginning with the intent that the developer is simply going to set up the district, get the incentives in place, and then their plan is to have someone else actually develop it. Sometimes they plan on being the developer of record for the whole time. But again, over the course of 20 years, things happen. So normally, the development agreements are going to include provisions addressing that. And like Bruce was indicating, just like you're having interest in making sure that that first developer has the ability to complete their job, you may also want to make sure you have some say, if they're going to assign it, that the second developer also has the wherewithal and the ability to complete the job. Provisions relating to the processing of reimbursements, that seems like a very simple concept. But I've seen, I've seen some really crazy things submitted over time. You as a city, in all likelihood, will be the entity responsible for evaluating how that TIF money, when that TIF money is handed over to someone. So you will have an obligation under the law to make sure that you are only reimbursing for things that are permitted under the law. I have seen some really wild things presented. And it can be very difficult for you to ascertain whether or not it applies to the project, whether it's one of the particular things that you've agreed to reimburse for. So the development agreement is going to provide some detail as to how that works. I've actually seen reimbursement requests to pay for costs that weren't even associated with the project. I mean, it does happen sometimes in error or whatever. So we'll want to address that in the agreement. Additional considerations, you know, many of these things Bruce has already touched on. So I'm probably not going to repeat them, except for I do want to get to the very last one. And that has to do with reimbursement or upfront financing. For both TIF and SID, the, as the TIF revenue becomes available, as SID revenue becomes available, you have the option of simply saying, we will only reimburse for costs after they have been incurred. Both of the sets of statutes under state law also permit you to issue bonds upfront. You can issue the city's bonds. And then as that revenue comes in, it is then used to pay the bond owners, the principal in interest. Since late 2008, 2009, when the economy took such a downturn, there were a number of bond issues done for TIFs or SIDS that went into default. Because things just didn't progress as quickly as people thought they would. And even though in the cases that I'm familiar with, the cities didn't have any liability to pay the debt service, it became a very cumbersome and expensive process for the city to nonetheless handle the default situation. We probably, Joe and I were just talking before we started, we probably are working on 20 or more TIF/SID development projects in the Johnson County area today. And I don't know any of them that are being done on any basis other than reimbursement. So for the most part, what we're seeing is that cities aren't issuing debt for these. And we're your bond council, we get paid money when you issue bonds. So I'm telling you this, this contrary to my own personal self-interest. But it's something for you to consider. And the other thing about it is that when you're only, when you're reimbursing, you have, you maintain some leverage to assure performance will happen. As opposed to when you issue bonds, there's a pile of money that has to be kind of instantly available. You've really lost a lot of the leverage you would have under those circumstances. Now, it might be a different story if you're just paying for city public improvements. Now, that can be a different analysis under that situation. But it certainly isn't an automatic that you should consider the issuance of bonds. And in most cases, I would advise you to be very careful in that process for this types of debt, just because things can happen. And on the things can happen scenario, Joe and I are going to kind of give you a couple of examples of projects that I'm sure you're familiar with, just to briefly trace their history and some of the incentives that were available as part of those projects. So you can get kind of some real life, real life flavor for what we're talking about here. Joe, do you want to start with that?
So when we were going through this process of trying to select the projects that we wanted to highlight, one of the ones was, it was really kind of in the same, in the vein that Dottie was mentioning, that you really can't control everything over that 20-year period of time or 22-year period of time. This is the first one that we wanted to highlight was the Corbin Park. I don't know if you're familiar with it. This is where Bonmar is and where the Shields Sporting Goods store is. And it kind of has an interesting past. And I just wanted to highlight, add some bullet points that I wanted to highlight for you. Of course, this is kind of an interesting one because of the longevity of it. But I'll give you kind of a summary. This initially involved a transportation development district. And the context of this started, the developers started talking with the city in 2004. The improvements included road improvements, certain infrastructure, some guttering signage and grading, utility relocation and the like. And for the next three years, the city had various planning commission items that had come up. But by 2008, in April of 2008, the developer had submitted a TDD petition. And the city held the required public hearing. And they actually approved the TDD, the creation of the Transportation Development District. So over the next four or five months, the city and the developer negotiated their development agreement. And this is kind of what Dottie was mentioning before 2008. It was kind of in that same old school framework. It's what the city can you give me as a developer? So the development agreement really just detailed what the project was, the amount of the tax, the additional sales tax, how much was the cost that was going to be reimbursed. But it didn't really have much other meat to it. There wasn't too many milestones, performance milestones and the like. Well, of course, as you know, that project stalled. There were some requests for continuance of the, when to start the sales tax that had come into play. And the city approved the delay because there really wasn't that much development going on right there. But of course, in 2010, the original developer had filed for bankruptcy. And of course, there was a whole proceeding with respect to bankruptcy. But in 2011, the project emerged from bankruptcy. There's an auction and a new developer in 2011 was a successful bidder in acquiring that property out of the bankruptcy. In 2012, the city and the new developer, actually, they negotiated the assignment of the original development agreement as well as they restated the development agreement. Because the city was realizing that they were giving away, you know, they didn't get, they didn't have the performance milestones. And they just lived through this where nothing was really, really being built. So they amended or restated that development agreement to put some meat to it and provided some caps on their reimbursement amounts, even though that was originally in the development agreement, as well as they put in some performance milestones. Of course, in 2013, this is kind of a success. Although this was going on for a while since 2004. And 2013 is when Shields Sporting Goods had come and well as other retailers were interested in that area. And so the developer, the new developer actually went to the city and requested a community improvement district, which the city affected. Since that time, since 2013, there have been some refinements to the development agreement. But I think overall, it's been a relatively successful project. Unfortunately, it started in 2004. We're now into 2015, I think that just recently was the last, or the most recent amendment to the development agreement. So the purpose of that was really to highlight, you know, while we want to, as Bruce said, wish we could find a way to mitigate all risks to the city. Unfortunately, we don't have that luxury and we don't have the wherewithal to do so. But this is one of those projects that it has a kind of a, I don't want to say checkered past, an interesting past. And it just, it details the longevity of just, just really the negotiations and the process itself. I don't know, Dottie has another one she'd like to share.
Well, and to point out, in that project, the incentive was an add-on sales tax. So there wasn't, there wasn't a TIF with it, there weren't IRBs with it. It was an add-on sales tax. And that kind of goes to how much things have changed back from the early 2000s to where we are now and the list of things that are being requested. The other project that I wanted to highlight, and I wanted, I was picking it out one because I know you're familiar with it, and two because Bruce worked on it with me, was the IKEA project in Maryland. And the IKEA project is really, in many ways, about the perfect project you could have. Because one, we started working with the end user. So they knew exactly what they were going to build. And they had their stuff down like an art. They knew exactly how long it took to build it. So it was, and it was a single building or it was a multiple building. So all of that made the whole process a lot easier and a lot faster than what they frequently are if you're dealing with a developer who's still trying to find tenants and can't totally for sure what every, how everything is going to be built and when it will be built. So in that respect, it was very, much easier. I started with discussions with the city on that project in the late fall, early winter of 2011. The, all of the proceedings, including the project plan, and that this was done with a TIF and only a TIF, were completed in December of 2012. So it took over a year for what I would characterize to be one of the easiest projects I've ever, I've ever done. So just, just to put it all into perspective, you know, that, in that case, the city gave them the property tax increment. And they also gave them half of their general sales tax. The city had both a general and a special dedicated sales tax. They pledged half of the general sales tax. And they did that for two reasons. Because a lot of cities will do one or the other, but not both. A lot of cities will pledge property tax or sales tax and not both of them. And again, they didn't pledge all of their sales tax, but they did pledge part of it. And they did that in part because of the extraordinary cost of building at that location. And I'm sure you've seen the very, very large walls that are holding up, that are holding up that building there, which were very, very expensive. But it was really kind of a home run project. Because IKEA, at that point, the closest IKEA was Denver. I think it's now St. Louis maybe is the closest one. The store had 60,000 customers before they ever even started talking. They had 60,000 Kansas City area customers before they ever even started talking to the city. People would order online or buy from their other, their other locations. Those stores, as you can imagine, generate a lot of sales tax and a lot of activity. And if you're bitter there recently, you just saw all the other stores popping up around it because of all of the activity that they helped to create this draw. So another interesting and contrasting case study to the Corbin Park. Do you have any questions for us? I have worked on, I don't know how many, TIFs and SIDS and lots of them, lots, lots, lots of them.
Yeah, yeah, I have a question. And it has to do with some of the instruments that we've kind of come up with in the city. You may be familiar with some of the tools that we've kind of bandied about. And part of it has to do with the fact we own our own utilities. So that gives us some flexibility that a lot of cities don't have. And since we kind of own that incentive and it doesn't require a lot of statutory hoops to jump through and would give a developer potential leg up in getting their infrastructure into the ground quicker because we have a built-in incentive once those, those infrastructure pieces are in the ground and not in there being used, once it's starting to be used, would we be able to leverage that a little bit more and maybe accelerate the timeframe for some development? Because we have that tool available to us?
Well.
I mean, knowing how much, how long TIFs take and how long some of these other incentives take to get them.
I don't know that that would necessarily accelerate the time. You know, I don't remember the utility service ever being the thing that was holding up the negotiations of the financial analysis or holding up the development agreement analysis. Now, certainly, there may be things because you, because you own the electric and the stewards. In some cases, water is going to be for somebody else. You probably have more control maybe over construction in some cases. But a lot of our projects are indoor projects, like the IKEA one. So it wasn't really an issue in terms of accessibility to me.
But for pure greenfield projects, like what we're seeing over there, it kind of lends itself to that.
I mean, you may be able to perform faster in terms of getting construction completed on those things. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm thinking. Because most of our development on the other side of I-35 is going to kind of fall into that category.
Yeah, so to that end, I think that you're certainly in a better position. Although it requires all of the utilities, right? So, you know, without water, the steward doesn't do you a lot of good, right? So you have to have all of those pieces come into play at the same time. I just, I guess, ins fairness to you, this is, it's a lengthy process. There are things that can be done to try to respond quickly. Sometimes cities are willing to schedule special meetings because there are a lot of statutory steps, the public hearings and other matters that can play into a calendar. So there are always things that you as the city can do to help expedite the timing. But it still is going to probably take a while. And there are things that are out of your control that are going to take a while, too. So, you know, how, developers tend to be anxious to get, to get from, you know, your agreement to provide the incentive. They're not necessarily always as anxious to commit to when they will actually start building things. And that's what you're going to ultimately want to see happen. So if, you know, you are working not just on your schedule, but on theirs. And in the meantime, they may be dealing with lenders or other things that are going on that you don't have any control over that aspect of the schedule.
But I think that's where you're talking about the cash flow and the funding capacity on the part of the developer. Because I'd be willing, or more willing, to provide incentives to individuals who have shown in the past that they have a documented means of being able to finance their own piece. And, you know, those are the people we would want to have partnerships with. I, you know, we talked about the benefit districts we've been underwater with. And a lot of that had to do with the fact that the folks who were looking for those incentives really didn't have the funding capacity to be able to deliver. So.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, in this, you're in a, you're facing this with eyes wide open. And I think the discussion particularly that Bruce has shared in terms of the financial analysis and the points you're making about having a, you know, feeling better about competing with somebody with a proven track record and the financial capabilities. All of those things can be very meaningful.
I've got a question about performance. And, you know, yes, economic development is the first, the first one of our priorities that's listed every time out of the gate. But fiscal stewardship is on equal footing. And I think that the residents in Gardner would want to know that we're entering into agreements with people and that they're going to hold up their ends of the agreements. And if they don't, that they can anticipate seeing the reimbursements from the city going down the road. Can you talk a little bit about, I'll just call them clawbacks. I'm sure there's a more safer, kinder sounding term for it. But can you, can you talk a little bit about that?
You know, there's, they really run the gamut in terms You know, there's, they really run the gamut in terms of ways that these can be structured. To say that I've never seen two development agreements that have the same provisions would be an understatement. These are truly individually negotiated contracts based with the facts relating to the city, and the facts relating to this developer and this development, as to what they're willing to do, or can do, or what's reasonable to ask them to do, and the same for you. The most, I mean, the most common check and balance I mentioned earlier, which I really view as kind of a recommended minimum thing to have in a development agreement, is that unless you want to, because you believe it has value well beyond this development, unless you want to prop money at the, for the city on its own to pay for, for example, infrastructure, the most common check and balance here is the reimbursement process, so that you require a certain degree of performance before you start releasing money. It is a way to see that something is getting built, and that you're not just reimbursing, for example, for land acquisition, and then nothing ever gets built. So that, that is used, I think, by most cities in the area anymore as a minimum.
Is there, is there anything beyond that that is most common, and is there any that has the most prospective pitfalls for using it?
Well, I might mention, even with the example I gave you, let's say you don't release any money until after, after a building is up and it's operational, buildings can go, can close, after they're operational. I mean, there is no way to guarantee you absolute success at the other end, but you're going into this with the understanding that both you and the developer want this to succeed. They're, they're not doing this and investing their time and money to have a project that's not going to succeed, they want to make sure it happens also. I think doing your homework on the front end to assess capabilities, and also to assess the financial impact to you of the development, even if it doesn't succeed, you need to figure out what is this going to cost us, is the right way to do it, because if your costs are limited, unless they perform, you've done a lot to mitigate your exposure.
Bruce, stand up.
I would absolutely agree with everything that Dottie and Joe just said. One other observation I might make is, let's just take a hypothetical project where you have a first phase, which is going to require some public participation, and then a second phase, that may, or more or less, and it's, but it's at a date to be determined. One way that you might also incent or encourage that completion of the whole project is to look at the but for, the need for the entire project, but then to only reimburse, or structure the reimbursement for, at a certain level, when they do the first phase, and then it picks up, if you will, when they get to the second phase. Even if the second phase doesn't need as much on its own, you can look at it as a whole, and then structure the reimbursement mechanism or percentages, maybe even holding back some of the public revenues that were generated by that first phase, and making those available to succeed, the incentive agreement, once the whole project is built out and the whole vision, if you will, for the site has been fulfilled.
Realized, yes.
Now, I would also say that, you know, that's a performance provision, and we were talking about some others offline as well, but you can also cap the city's participation if the project is better than expected. So just as you want to hold their feet clear to get the deal done, and you want to have the right to pull back some incentives if they don't succeed what they say they're going to succeed, let's say the project is much better than it is... Well, there's also cases where you can end incentive agreements early if an independent analysis shows that they've done their threshold level of performance and then some. And that's still a win for them, because, you know, the project's making more money, it's generating higher lease rates, whatever the case might be, if you get some of those public revenues back to the city. So that might be another performance provision on the positive side.
And we also see, you know, frequently, the developer, we're just, frequently, we're just reimbursing for developer expenses. So the developer has, they've shelled out the money for the infrastructure connections, for the land acquisition, for the site improvements, and we're just reimbursing them for what they have already invested. Sometimes, though, I've worked for a number of projects where the city has actually paid for a portion of what needed to happen, particularly in the case of public infrastructure. So maybe the city pays for X amount, and the developer then, their expenses are Y amount for the land acquisition, site development. In the TIF agreement, then, we will establish the prioritization of the dispersment of TIF money or SIDS money. And we may say, city gets paid first, or developer gets reimbursed, or we may say, city and developer are reimbursed on a pro-rata basis, so you both get something every time there's some excess revenue. So again, it's going to depend on the particulars of a, of an individual project.
Mr. Mayor, that, I was, I'm glad Dottie raised that, because that gets to a couple of the issues, the question as well. You know, having your own utilities and your ability to use those resources might be a really nice lever to use, and that might be one of those things that have high values to the developer as well. So then, to Dottie's point, you might structure the agreement to the way that there is more paid to go than to the rest of the deal, or more of a pro-rata, share the person, city first, and then to developer, because you are putting one of those tools, like the public investment upfront on the street. So I guess what I would like, what I'm trying to say is that it's not, all tools are created equal, neither their values to the city or to the developer. We want to make sure that if you're putting a high-value tool forward, or to get the project done, we're just factoring that into the overall mix.
All right, unless anybody else has anything else, we're bumping up on seven o'clock, so we will close it. Ed, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dottie.
It is greatly appreciated.